Good afternoon and welcome to the November 29th, 2017 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum presence, so I'll call the meeting to order. We have one item on the agenda for this special meeting this afternoon. That is a public hearing on the Murfreesboro Design Guidelines. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Ms. Green, are you going to lead us off?
I am. We do have one public hearing scheduled this afternoon, and it's an exciting topic, at least I consider it such, and it's for the city to adopt citywide design guidelines. And this is something that's been in the works for years, for at least 10 years. It's something that we started and prepared a draft document in 2007, but decided that wasn't the right time to move forward. And then you may recall, in 2015, City Council said, "The time's right, let's do something about this." And so we did form a steering committee that studied the matter and came up with a document which has been curated to you, and it's available on our website. And the steering committee has unanimously recommended adoption of this document. And after that meeting, the Planning Commission and City Council held a workshop to study the matter. And at that meeting, did request for us to take the matter of sidewalks, which had been hotly debated, out of this document, but bring it to you in the future with some alternatives that we can consider to be adopted. So those folks who are interested in this document and had concerns about the sidewalk policy or wondered where we were going with that, we are going to go somewhere with it, but it's not a part of this document. The purpose of the Murfreesboro Design Guidelines is to develop standards for commercial multifamily developments in Murfreesboro and to some subdivision standards. And the purpose is to create a sense of place for Murfreesboro. We know that we're a rapidly growing community. I put some stats in your staff comments that said, "In 2000, our population was 68,000 or 68,816 people." And it's estimated in 2010 that we're 108,755. So you can see that's a rapid change. We want to make sure that during this dynamic growth, that we don't lose who we are, and we have some standards that help keep that sense of place. And that's what we're hoping this document does, and that it takes steps further to retain, protect, and promote our quality of life, and that helps the built environment reflect our sense of place. I'd like to invite Randy Caldwell to the lecturn. He has a brief presentation for you. And I think some of the information you may have heard, but we just want to go through it again with you. And anybody who's interested in watching in this meeting can have this additional information. After which, you should open, conduct a public hearing, and then the adoption is to Planning Commission. So if you decide to adopt it today, it will be a document that will be up to you. We will take it to Planning or City Council, just for an acknowledgement resolution, because we want them to know that we're on board. As a matter of fact, they're the ones who asked us to do this, and we're anticipating taking it to them. But it will be an adopted document if that's what you decide to do today. And at this time, I'll invite Mr. Caldwell to go through the details of the plan.
Make sure I get this right. Good afternoon. Happy to finally be here after probably a year's worth of work, but I think the effort was well worth it with the document that, you know, that we came up with. I do have Michael Hyman here with me tonight. Michael was involved, obviously, in the architectural side of this. And, you know, we had Michael on our team when we did the initial draft of this, and Michael does a lot of work, so understands the private development community as well as we do. So we think we've come up with a document, I think, that addresses a lot of things that we basically heard in the past, but also kind of took that document forward into including, you know, additional stuff that the city was experiencing, as well as taking some stuff out that had already been addressed in the zoning document. I got to find the forward button on here, so I'm having a little hard time. Let me get to F5. Maybe that's it. Well, how do I move this forward? I get this up on the screen on my PowerPoint. Good. Thank you. Again, as Margaret Ann said, we had a steering committee that was involved on this, and we had about seven meetings with them. Certainly appreciate their involvement. They were very committed to attending these meetings and giving us great input as part of that. Also, I want to thank the staff. We really went through this document in detail with them, each section, to address their concerns as well. So again, pretty good process as far as that goes. Here, basically, you see the process that we went through. Went through inventory review. We did a set of preliminary guidelines. We had a public open house to get public input. So now we're at that final implementation stage of the project. Again, Margaret Ann addressed the previous effort. Again, as you all know, back in 2005, we undertook an effort to develop a set of guidelines that was put on hold for a while. We basically started this process about a year ago. And really, again, as I said earlier, kind of took things, reviewed the previous document to see what was working, what wasn't working, and implement new issues that had come up since that time. As far as community outreach and engagement, we had seven steering committee meetings. We had an open house. We had a website that we gathered comments from, and we also had various news releases to make the public aware of what the process was. And really went through a conservative effort with Sterling Communications as far as capturing those comments, documenting them, and making sure we addressed them as part of the revisions that we incorporated into it. Again, as we went through this, there were five elements that the public told us that wanted to be addressed. That was basically, Margaret Ann said, "Sense of place," which was important to everybody. Streetscape design, site design, landscape design, and architecture design. So this whole document is basically formatted to address those various issues. In each section, as part of that, you'll see where we basically established design principles that would be the guiding vision for how we wanted to address each issue in each section. From there, we developed objective statements with each issue that we wanted to address that basically defined the general purpose of what we were trying to accomplish. And then we divided up into guidelines, which were a little bit more general than design standards, which are very specific criteria. And also, one thing we heard as we went through this new process was the concern about infill and adaptive reuse and the flexibility that had to be accounted for with that, because those sites, not every site is the same. So when you look through the document, it's basically all divided into those sections to address each issue. The introduction, as you see the format of the document, starts out with the introduction of the section. That basically sets the table for the purpose of the document, also decides what does apply, and basically, again, any new development, planned developments, and in certain circumstances under existing building rehab or redoing of site. So there's some very specific criteria established within the document as far as what meets that criteria. Again, recognizing the need for some flexibility in infill projects as well. And then we have the exempted districts as well. We've got the City Corral overlay, the North Highlands Historic Bottoms, Central Business District, Main Street, local historic areas that are all exempted from that area. One thing we started to realize as we started to look at the document, I think the bottoms and the Highlands study really proved this out, that even within those districts, they each had five or six little different character areas that were going to have different sets of criteria based on the context of what the existing development was around there. So again, as those districts, we see establishing their own set of guidelines as they move forward on that. So a very conservative effort just to remove those, exempt those from this document because of the complexity with that. And again, as I go through each section, again, I'll just show you the public street network, what it addresses, basically, street types, connectivity, traffic calming, public street treatment, transit stops, service delivery capabilities. And on these next slides, you can kind of see how we started formatting that with the design principles. And then each section will show you where basically you have the guidelines, what the guidelines for that section are on the left, what the standards are on the right, and if there's any infill adaptive reuse criteria, we've got that established in the same section. So you'll see that each section is organized in that format to create some consistency as we address each issue. Site design, as we went through that, the items that were basically addressed with that are preservation, building lots, site orientation, building setbacks, service facility orientation, parking, pedestrian systems, access control, open space, lighting, utilities, and then stormwater, and then service delivery capabilities, which was a big issue when we first did the initial draft of this document. So you'll see that addressed in each section. And again, you'll just see kind of how it's formatted within a section. Landscape, again, those are the elements that you see that are addressed as part of that. And again, the same outline format. And then architecture, again, you can see the things that Michael addressed as part of that. So I could go into a lot of detail with this, because this is months' worth of work. And I think when we went through the steering committee meetings, we had two or three-hour meetings on each one of those sections, just to give you an idea of the level of complexity and the amount of detail that we went through as we went through that process. But I think I probably presented some of that in the workshop. Be happy to address any real, you know, specific concerns that you have, or anything you may have heard from the public since we've had that workshop, and we're here to respond tonight to any other comments or questions that you might have. So with that said, if you want to, we can open the floor for the public hearing, or however you want us to handle it from this point forward.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Green, do you have anything else?
No, I'm just ready to hear what the public has to say.
All right, we'll open the public hearing. I scheme by jump forward, I'd like to speak.
Chairman Lamb, Commission, Design Team and Staff. I actually did two redlined versions of this back in '05 and '06, which are probably somewhere in Joseph's files. Nevertheless, and I think I came to talk to a couple of you about it at the time, I just have some brief things that, I actually have gone through this four or five times now, if you'll just bear with me. I don't know if this is an odd thing or a God thing, but I guess we'll find out. A couple of items of concern, is this a living document? In other words, will it come up in three years or five years to be revised and updated and upgraded? One thing that I looked at was on page four, you know, the developers will be encouraged, clear and predictable design requirements, alternative design solutions, and strongly encouraged to use the guidelines, which is all fine, but as the staff rolls over, some of these things get more encouragement than other things, which makes it, from my perspective as a developer, builder, broker, contractor, difficult to build these projects if I don't have some good concise consistency. On page 21, and I've brought these up at some of the other sessions, I'm just trying to, and I went through this last version, so that's why I'm here. "All buildings shall be oriented on building," this is under standards, one of the last sentences, "on public streets," which is fine, "with parking along the side and in the rear." That's going to be a challenge in some areas, as I'm sure you well know, but for us to go into a development saying, "The parking's got to be on the side and the rear and none in the front," is, to me, a little awkward from a developer's perspective. Not that it can't be done or designed, but as a standard, that may be something difficult. I'm on page 23 now, under three, the last sentence. Outdoor storage and display. And there's not a lot in this book on industrial, but I know in my industrial developments, a lot of my clients that lease from me have outside storage. And I may build a building, or they may, I won't say, change the use and occupancy, because I don't do that a lot, but there is some outside storage involved. And you know Home Depot, Fairbrothers, a lot of these, a lot of those types of businesses have outside storage. I just hope that you have some latitude there, if nothing more than seasonal for trees and things that they may be overstocked on, and not have the area to do it onsite. Page 24. When we get to the parking areas where we have more than 200 trees, I brought this up once before, but is there a way to make the parking islands to break up the land, the sea of parking, maybe a 15 to 20? Because I know in some layouts, sometimes we run into a situation where, gee, if I had another two foot, I could meet the ordinance perfectly and have the right parking spaces, but if I'm held to that 20 and there's no flexibility, then I'm wasting space, is what Page 36, under standards, number two. "I wonder why the four-inch caliber trees," right now, it's difficult to find a four-inch caliber tree, and then we have to be very selective on species of tree. They are more than double the money, and it takes a larger piece of equipment, because dingoes typically won't move that size of tree around a tight site. So now we're into either skidster or backhoe. I just personally had a concern with that. I know it's only a percentage of it, but still the same. Under number three, "Who will determine a large area? What is large?" That's kind of arbitrary, and who, I mean, what is large? To me, large may not be the same thing as the planner that's on staff at that time. And the minimum five-foot diameter, oh, yeah, around the trees. Chain link fencing, I'm sorry, I'm on page 38, under standards, number four, last sentence, "Chain link fencing would not be considered to meet screen or buffer criteria." I understand that. I know that, and I'm going back to the industrial area, some of my prospects, clients, prefer to have the trees on the inside of that fence rather than the outside, because people can climb the trees and jump the fence, and it has happened a couple of times. And then they steal equipment or steal materials. So I didn't know, and that's something that we can bring up when I get a client for planning that, but that was a concern. Stormwater management, that's on page 38 also. Concerns I have there, from a residential perspective, is we all have been here long enough, I think, to understand what happens to some HOAs. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but I think the city should look at in the future, are these going to become wetlands when the HOAs go defunct? And how are we going to deal with that as a city? How are we going to ensure that an HOA that has gone belly up and you can't get anybody to commit to maintaining those, so they grow up, now they've got cattails in the micropools, and we have a wetlands, and we've got hundreds of them all over the city? Fence climbers, maintenance, okay. A lot of these, some of the ponds, I'm still on ponds, the engineer of record has asked me to put fences around for safety purposes. So now I've got the pond, which I've lost yield on, I've got to put a fence around it. Now I'm going to be able, I'm going to need to landscape it, so I've got a lot of things going on around that. To landscape it, I'm losing even more yield, and it's not all about the money, but there's an efficiency here that I think needs to be considered. And access, some of these are very deep, so there are only certain points that I can get access into those ponds. I can't go down somebody's property line around the back where it may be shallower. I've got to go from the right-of-way right into those ponds, which in many cases is the deeper portion of that pond, and then you tear the grass up, and I get a call from stormwater, say, "You need to repair the grass." So it's just kind of an ongoing maintenance concern. I'm on page 40, under two. Okay, little confused here. Bullet point number three, "Street trees in the right-of-way to be maintained by the City of Murfreesboro." Okay? "Street trees outside shall be maintained by the homeowners association or management." I'm okay with that, with one exception. I have a property right now, development, that shows in the plan development that there will be street trees. This document that I'm in review on says that the owner or the HOA will be responsible for the trees' maintenance in the right-of-way. Okay? Not the city. This document says that I will be as the owner or the HOA. So two issues here. One is, is the city going to maintain those after a warranty period? Or, which this conflicts with the document, or is the city going to maintain them? And then secondly, it says in here, "If the HOA goes away, the owner will be responsible." Well, my grandkids may not be in development. So when does that owner's responsibility end? Just something to ponder. Okay? I am going to page 41. Oh. And I'm not fussing, Gary, I'm just making statements. At some point, I think there needs to be more staffing, because there are a lot of details in this book, in addition to the ordinances and the number of pages. Some of you that have been here a while, we used to build plans on four sheets of paper, and now it's 20 sheets of paper. So there's a lot more detail, lot more review, lot more boxes to check, if I can put it that way. And by the way, I think staff does a great job with all that they have going on and all that we're doing. We're, as you know, really growing. I just, sometimes I don't know how they keep up with all of it. Page 42, that has to do, again, with the trees or the improvements in the right-of-way. And I think this will be the last one. On page 50, under number five, there's a typo. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Very good comments. Anybody else like to speak? One at a time, okay? All in, all done. Close public hearing. Staff, can either you or Mr. Caldwell or somebody try to answer some of Mr. Swanson's questions?
I think I'll start and have Randy kind of pick up maybe where I don't. So I think Mr. Swanson's in a unique position, whereas he's been here in Murfreesboro and developing for a long time, so he has a lot of individual experiences that probably other people don't have, so we appreciate his input, especially catching typos. But he does industrial developments and commercial developments and multifamily, as a matter of fact, and I think some of the best developments we have, he's done there. Some of the comments are just comments, particularly when talking about chain link fencing. The standard in the design guidelines is just saying that you can't use chain link for screening, because it doesn't effectively screen. It's not saying that it has to be on one side or the other of the trees. So I think his comments are valuable, and we should maybe apply them. But in that case, it's just saying that it's not effective screening, I think, particularly if you think about a storage yard for wrecked or partially dismantled vehicles, and they want to put chain link up as a screen, and we don't think that's an effective screen. Or if you're thinking between multifamily and single family, you can put a fence up between those properties to act as a screen, but chain link isn't appropriate. Another type of fencing would be. Now, if you want to have chain link and not treat it as screening, then that's something different. It's just the context of the document, and I think maybe that comment are just a little different. And I think that it has good concern when he says, "People have different interpretations," and that's true with everything that we have, but the plans go to Planning Commission. And so I may think one thing is screened enough, and Gary Whitaker may think a little differently, but it's the Planning Commission who decides that. So I think if it were up to each individual planner in the department, I would worry too, if I had to take my plans and didn't know who I was going to get, and they had all different opinions. But I think we do a good job of having a standard and applying that standard. But I want there to be assurances to know that it's not, like I've mentioned before, it's not Margaret Ann's plan, it's not Margaret Ann's site, it's not Margaret Ann's city, it's our community, and it's Planning Commission's job. And I think you guys do a good job reviewing those. If there are issues that I'm having trouble with or other members, we bring them up to you and say, "Hey, this is something that we're having trouble deciding what's the best solution, and the zoning ordinance leaves that to you." And so I think, hopefully, that would give a little bit more comfort to people who use this document. The four-inch caliber, I probably should not speak to that. I'll ask maybe Randy or Brad Barbie, who's also here to look at it. And he had some comments about the sub-lot parkings, where there's 200 parking spaces, what standard's already in the zoning ordinance. So what this document does, it has some new guidelines and standards, but also what we already have, we've put in here, because we wanted to kind of be one place where you can, you don't have to go between, dump between all these documents to find these standards, that they'd be on one place. So we already have a requirement that those large parking areas have to be divided into sub-lots, and that really comes into play more with big-box retailers and sometimes grocery stores, but not always, or large shopping centers. And a 20-foot island, and I probably want Randy to expand on a little bit more, we did have some conversation during the steering committee about that. What would be big enough to house the utilities and the landscaping and other type? Did you want to expand on that?
We did. We had quite a bit of comment, you know, or discussion on that. In fact, I think we even looked at possibly an alternative, if there weren't any utilities in there, that we might be able to narrow that a little bit. But I think as a committee, we just decided to keep it as 20-foot, just to, you know, just to be consistent everywhere. And it's something that's, you see out in the gateway there, and really, when you look at a 200-lot parking space area, it's really going to affect really large, you know, really large sites. It's not going to affect a lot of the smaller sites. So that's another reason I think we decided just to keep it consistent and keep it at 20-foot wide there. So we did have quite a bit of discussion on that and kind of landed at just keeping it the way it was.
Yeah.
And that was with, you know, some engineers on our steering committee and others, I think, that agreed with that.
I think that if you wanted to do something different and you had a hardship, then the variance could be sought from the Board of Zoning Appeals. So that would be. And if you have a unique situation, that really needs to be a little different. You have to have a standard. I mean, there has to be some number. And so I think as a committee, we decided 20 feet was the best, but, you know, it's our document. And then parking, encouraging the parking in the sides and rear is really something that we took from the Conference of Plans, something that, as far as site design's important. It doesn't say that there can be no parking between the building and the streets, we just didn't want the seas of parking to be there. So if you can, and I think a good example of this is if you think of the Walmart on Memorial Boulevard, that's a result of the lot configuration, but how it's not the large sea of parking just in the front, but it's distributed to the sides as well. I think that that is a good site design element there. And just to clarify, there are, of course, guidelines and standards. Guidelines are what we'd like for them to do, but standards are the things that you really need to do. And so there is that distinguishing in the document. And this, of course, is adopted by the Planning Commission, and if we find that we need to change something, just like we do with the zoning ordinance, just like we do with the subdivision regulations, we can change that. It would be a public hearing process. It's not something that we could just go in and change on our own, but certainly, that's something, if it's not working, then we'll change it. But a lot of what's in here, we've already been applying, it's already maybe applied in certain areas of our community, maybe we've been applying it generally, and it's worked well. So that's why we felt comfortable moving forward with these guidelines. It's not, most of this stuff isn't brand-new to us as far as the site design, and so staff has a level of comfort with it, because it's already something that we've kind of been moving forward with. And then stormwater, there are several stormwater comments. A lot of it is already in the zoning ordinance, requiring the screening. I really don't know if they turn into wetlands, what the design guidelines has to speak about that, but Sam, do you have any additional comments?
Yeah, I think Mr. Swanson had mentioned, you know, the obligations of owners or HOAs for stormwater management areas and how we deal with that. We do require a long-term operation and maintenance plan for stormwater management areas, and the owner also signs a stormwater maintenance agreement, which is recorded, so it runs with the property, that describes the owner's responsibilities and the city's remedies if they fail to maintain those areas. And so we do have some remedies. And so we do have some remedies in there. Uh, the, the remedies for us in, in commercial, industrial, uh, sites, multifamily sites are, are, I would say, much stouter, because there's a fee that we charge those, uh, properties, and so we have the ability to use, uh, the fee or revoking credits that we've given on the fee, uh, for maintenance. The truth is residential subdivisions, a little bit tougher for us, because there is not a fee associated with that. But what, what we have done over the past, uh, five to ten years is, is be very deliberate in requiring owners' associations and the front-end documents to be established on the front end. And as many of you know, uh, many developments, uh, now include more than just stormwater ponds. There's, uh, other amenities, uh, poolhouses, walking trails, uh, playgrounds, passive space. And so someone, some entity needs to own those. And occasionally, we have those to fail, but for the most part, we've, we've been, uh, pretty successful for, uh, having the owners to, to be able to maintain those, the owners' associations, where those have been properly established and incorporated. Um, and we do have them fail from time to time. Mr. Whitaker could, uh, probably go on all afternoon about property maintenance, uh, issues in, in, in failed subdivisions or subdivisions where, where, you know, some element was a common element, a sign, uh, a stormwater management area. Uh, but for the most part, our practices have been, uh, pretty helpful. Uh, Mr. Swanson also mentioned that, um, you know, the ideas of, uh, that there was some, some, um, risk of, of hurting yield on some of the properties, because we're, we're adding some things up. I think Margaret Ann mentioned that these are requirements that are there now. This just puts it in one spot. But the other thing that, that the, the guidelines and the requirements do is they give a lot of flexibility to the designer and developer to come up with a plan that meets the requirements, but then also doesn't compromise their, their yield on the property, if you will. And, and so we see landscaping and safety features that would be required around stormwater ponds and stormwater maintenance areas as being one of those things that the designer has a lot of flexibility to shape and configure that so that it meets the, the intent. We think those are very compatible things when they're done, when, when the designer considers it that way. And, and they can come up with a plan that, uh, that doesn't hurt yield, but also meets the intent of the regulations. Uh, and, and we think that the, the way the regulations are written, we give them a lot of flexibility to do that. Margaret Ann, was there anything else on stormwater that?
I think that you, yes, the questions I heard.
What about the, the problem with, like, the deep? Did you address where it's, where it's deep?
Well, so one of the things we do ask, and I, I made a broad statement earlier, Ms. Jones, that said, uh, you know, we do require them to, to develop a long-term operation and maintenance plan, and one of the elements of that long-term operation and maintenance plan is how do you get in and out? And, and there are reasons to get in and out for routine events, like mowing or routine maintenance of some element of the stormwater maintenance, uh, facility, uh, treating a filter, removing debris, whatever. Then there are other times when, um, you know, it's a, it's a repair situation, and you really couldn't foresee that. But, uh, but, but we asked the designer and the developer, and, and hopefully the owner's in with that, but, but the, but the design team, we asked them to address the maintenance needs of the project, uh, for long term. And so that should include, uh, a way to, to reasonably get in and out of it without, um, you know, without compromising some of the other things, um, that, that Mr. Swanson had, had mentioned.
So, so that just makes me think, so all the plans that we see, like when we're looking at a plan development, if they're requiring, uh, stormwater detention or retention, all that stuff that I can't keep straight. Is there somewhere in there also required that, that, um, long-term maintenance plan? And is that a part of the documents that we approve, or is that something separate that you keep in your department, or?
It is. The, the stormwater maintenance plan is, is addressed in the, um, city code under stormwater. Um, and then the, the maintenance plan and ma- maintenance agreement are part of the procedure, policy and procedure on that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's like water and sewer and, uh, electric. They're necessary for development. They're not necessarily in the planning, um, and, and zoning per se, in that the, um, the zoning ordinance and the design guidelines address them, but the, but the substantial requirements for their design and construction are actually housed in another, uh, standard somewhere. So we have, we have the water and sewer ordinance, we have, uh, the electric ordinance, we have stormwater ordinance, and, and the streets and subdivision ordinances. Those all deal with the design elements, um, and construction elements of those facilities. Your purview on that is covered in how they influence the shape and size of the design and all of that, but the requirements are addressed, because they're, most of them in very technical nature, but they're addressed in other, uh, city code sections, and in some cases, even things outside of city code, state requirements and federal requirements.
So it's not something we're supposed to be seeing and reviewing in our books?
And, and something on the stormwater, and I'm sure Joe remembers that, uh, years past, that, that was, that wasn't in existence. Uh, those were federal regulations that were pushed, handed down to the state, and then the state mandates us to enforce. So that's one item that our hands are tied on. We don't, we don't have a choice, but that's something that we really can't go in and modify and have very little flexibility as far as the requirements of the ponds and the, now, how they can actually manage that on-site. They do have some flexibility, but as far as that requirement, we have none, because that's actually mandated through the feds and through the state.
And so, as long as, I was just making sure, you know, I, I, I know that's something I've never looked at or looked for in one of these books. If that's something you all take care of?
We do.
And it's somewhere that we don't see?
We do.
And it's not supposed to be part of what we see in here, but we know it's done? That's good.
But what I would say about that is you should see the results of our work, and I say our work collectively with the design team and the review team. When that plan comes through, we should be asking them to include elements that address the, the design guidelines, the, the safety and landscaping, uh, ability to operate and maintain that facility in accordance with their long-term plan. You should see the shape and configuration of that stormwater management area and make sure that it, it fits with the development plan. Um, th- those are all things that are, that can be part of, of your review and part of staff's review, um, as a result of the designer's work. The substantial requirements for that, the technical requirements for that are covered under other, other city codes and, and other requirements, but you should see the result of it on the printed page.
So, like, I've never thought about the pond that's in the back section, that there's a walking trail to go to. How does somebody get there to mow that area back there? And whose property are they crossing to get there? Whatever. I mean, just never thought about that, if that's something we're.
And sometimes you'll have a, uh, stormwater management area that may serve several different parcels. So there's several different configurations, but that's kind of the stuff that staff does in the background that, 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 that has been going on for some time, that.
Yes.
And, and we'll be happy to forward those.
Absolutely not. I was just about to say.
And those documents, if you, at any time, if you want us, we will be happy to share that with you.
Yeah. But there's some things you are looking at. So if somebody's putting a stormwater pond in the front of the property along a street, I think you care what that looks like. And we do require already in the zoning ordinance that it be screened with vegetation. There's some, um, some areas where they're pretty deep in the front. I think you kind of remember that. So if, if that's as part of the design, that is something that you are looking at. Generally, they try to put it in the back, or they use pavers, and of course, um, we review the, the paving type when you use plant. So there are things about it that you are looking at, at Planning Commission, and I think you've probably made some comments before. Sometimes they're very gentle bio-sweals on Med Center, you wouldn't know it, but some of those in the front are actually retention areas. They're not very deep, like detention or retention areas. And we ask them to design it so that it's not so obvious. Of course, the, the hospital has a very large one, but because the property's so large, I think it looks good, because it's, it's, and if, if you really look at it, you're like, "Oh, well, that's detention," but driving by, it's not something that kind of draws your attention to it. So you do look at it as far as how it relates to the street and the site, but, um, I, I've heard Sage Chase on multiple occasions say, "Well, how you going to get in there and mow that?" Um, when someone is fence. And I think we've gotten better, uh, reviewing these than maybe when we first started out. Um, we, we live and learn and, and ask, know what questions to ask. Sometimes you just don't know what questions to ask. So, and I say, we really, I don't, I'm looking at, uh, maybe the type of things that you are looking at, but Mr. Huddleston and his team are really getting into the details.
Chairman, I would, I would like to commend Mr. Swanson. He, uh, he brought up some good questions, but also for being involved and getting involved and being a part, uh, even back when this originally started. Uh, I've had a couple of meetings with him. I know he's, he's come to some of our public meetings, and that's what we look for, is public to get engaged, developers to get engaged, to, to bring out if there's pitfalls. And, and this document, one of the first things he said was, "This is a living document." And pretty much all of our, um, documents, this one, uh, our zoning ordinance, uh, I'm curious now to look back and how many changes we've actually brought through, zoning ordinance changes. Uh, also with the BZA, uh, we've made several changes this year to try to simplify. So I, there's no doubt in my mind that once we implement this document, as we go through it, as we go through the learning curve, and with any ordinance or any changes, there will be a learning curve for us, staff, as well as the developers and the public. And I'm sure we'll be bringing back changes in the future, uh, things that work, things that don't work. There'll be some refinement, there always is. Uh, I don't know of any perfect ordinance or document that's ever been written. And not only that, but as things change, as our city grows, as trends change, uh, the way things, uh, and just in my thirty-year tenure here at the city, I've seen trends change drastically, and our construction and development needs will fit that. They will change to fit that, and I can see this document being modified in years to come. But I've also had, uh, on another note, I've had at least three architects to compliment us for doing this, because it gives them some design parameter, instead of having to come in and sit down with basically no, no guidance. This at least gives them guidance, uh, and it's a good place to, to go to for, we, we tried to make the document is, uh, it would put the information to one location, so it covered the, the, uh, general aspect of development in the City of Murfreesboro. So you don't have to go to four or five different documents to try to figure out how to design to come, uh, and to submit into the City of Murfreesboro. So I truly feel that it's a, a good document, and I did appreciate Joe's plug for staffing. Uh, anytime somebody can help me out with staffing, and I happen to have, uh, one of my council members sitting beside of me here, and, uh, but we, just, uh, on that note, Mr. Swanson and I have an interview set up toward the end of the week for, uh, for a principal planner. We've hired one, and she went straight to our census. She's actually handling the census for us right now, and now's a good opportunity to plug that. We're fixing to do our second mailing on the census. You, how do you like how I segwayed into that? Uh, we have done our first mailing, we have about, uh, forty-three percent response. Fixing to do our second mailing, should go out before the end of the week. So those that are watching, please get those cards. Fill them out. It's worth, hopefully, in excess of a couple of million dollars to, uh, our tax base. So, uh, help us with this census that we're doing. And with that, we will be interviewing and hopefully have another planner on staff to help with some of this workload that the American Council were nice enough to give us, two additional staff people. It's just taken us a while to get, uh, uh, people actually onboard. We've hired one, the second one hopefully will be on for the first of the year, so.
I did want to circle back to one of the topics that Mr. Swanson brought up, which was street trees. It's something that we wrestled with, and I think that if we wrestle with, then probably somebody else will. And he referenced page forty. Um, and so what we, as staff, realize in, in the steering committee was, um, we, in some places, we do have street trees. In the gateway, they're mandatory. We have a gateway streetscape master plan that tells you what to put in, when to put in, and where to put it in. Um, but other than that, we know that when they're incorporated in the design of subdivision, they really add value to the subdivision. When you think about, um, Main Street, and you go down Main Street, those trees just add an ambiance that you can't, uh, that, that just makes the street. And so we, what we did is we said, "Okay, we're not going to make them mandatory for everybody, but we're going to say, if you're going to put them in, here's the standards." Because we have developments with them in, and basically we just let people write the standards each time they want to put them in, come up with a plan that works. So we really wanted to implement a plan that if you're going to have street trees, which we think are good ideas, they're not required, but if you are, here's the list of what the standards are. And it, it took a lot of working with Urban Environmental as well, and our Engineering and Transportation Department, who are, were all on board with the idea. And so what we have on page forty are the standards that if you do put them in. Um, and we wanted to protect the ability of the city if they are in the right-of-way, and for us, of course, to, if we need to do something to those trees, we can. And I want to ask Mr. Caldwell to kind of expand on the conversations that we had about those street trees, um, because.
You've captured it pretty well. I mean, it was, it was probably our biggest discussion as part of the street network that we went through, and I think we decided from, I think in the initial document we had, it was a requirement when we did the first set of guidelines. And then we decided to back off that, out of concern for maintenance, the maintenance load that it would put on your Urban Environment Department, um, and other issues. But again, as Margaret Ann said, when they do get incorporated, incorporated, there are certain criteria we wanted to establish to make sure the long-term survivability of those trees as, as well, rather than put them in two-foot strip areas, you know, making sure that that island is wide enough that, you know, you know, will help that tree survive long-term, and just make sure that the developer's, uh, aware of that as, as well. So, a lot of discussion about it, but at the end of the day, it was not, it was not a requirement, but set some criteria for somebody to discuss. Because we do them all the time, and we do them as part of, you know, there's a lot of developers that do want to put street trees in their development, because it may, does make a difference in creating a sense of place. And that's one of the key criterias, I think we read in the 2035 plan, was some of the lack of that in some of the existing subdivisions. So we certainly didn't want to discourage it as part of, as part of this document.
And, um, I know Mr. Swanson has a development victory station where he, in his plan development package, required street trees. And, um, I think it's added very much to that development. And so those standards that applied to him in that plan development will still apply, is not changing with the design guidelines, because that's part of the zoning, and so how that has been done, it will continue to be done. Um, and we just wanted to have one, something that could, we could all follow the same path in the future. And, um, maintenance, we really were concerned about the ability of Urban Environmental to maintain some of this, if we are going to add a lot of it. And that was one of the things that I was going to say, street trees.
And you may be touching on it, but I just don't understand it. One of the questions Mr. Swanson had was confusion over who was going to maintain, whether they were, I think he used the term inside or outside. I'm not sure I understand exactly what the question was, but have we answered that question? As?
Um, in the document, we, I believe we have the, um.
In right-of-way, it's required by the city. But again, I think if it's, you know, if the, if the developer decides to want to put that, and I'm going to ask Brad here, if they decide that they want to maintain that, you guys wouldn't have an issue with that, would you? As part of what, as part of their documents? Yeah.
And we believe, um, Mr. Barbie and Mr. Adams are working on updating, we have a document called the, uh, City of Murfreesboro Tree Management Ordinance. That's quite out of date. You can tell, because it was still written on typewriter. And so we're going to have to take that back and update it to be consistent with this as well. Um, and so I think when we first started talking about the street trees, Urban Environmental knew that this was, um, some responsibility, and so they've been working on that, uh, to make sure that we are comfortable with what's going on there. There, we've asked, I think in here, we talk about them, uh, if street trees are being put in, and, and in the right-of-way, they have to sign some agreements, which are pretty standard.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Caldwell?
He, uh, Mr. Swanson mentioned something about outdoor storage. Do we want to touch upon that? I don't know that we've.
Yeah, I, I think, going back with memory, the outdoor storage was being driven by the Home Depots that were putting out, you know, their seasonal displays and putting out, you know, the mulch and all that, you know, the, the mulch bags and the stone bags and all that out in front. So that was the purpose of how that section evolved in this document, to make sure that the parking was truly being used for parking, and it wasn't being used for outdoor storage, but also the visual impact that had on, on the development. Uh, industrial's a little different. I, I still don't know that you want to see that in public view. I mean, the whole purpose of, of that storage is that it's not in public view, and I think
I mean, the whole purpose of that storage is that it's not in public view, and I think that's the way this section was written, that you got the option of putting it on the sides or the rear of the buildings as long as they're not in public view. So I would think that would address an industrial-type use. Would you think so, Joe, on that? I mean, I think that was the purpose, if it was more for commercial-related, you know, applications on there.
And while we-
When we worked, started 10 years ago, I took pictures of Home Depot or-
Come on up the microphone if you would, Jim.
I remember specific pictures. The Home Depot parking lot had large areas fenced off for mulch, and the portable buildings, they had a large area just lined up of portable buildings. That's since been removed. So it's gone now, but at the time, that was-
That was, that was driving that issue.
And also, they're using the parking that they need for you to go into the store where they're putting stuff in. So we allow outdoor storage now. We just say submit a site plan and show where it is. And this is basically putting it in writing. And so, and I'm thinking, but industrial areas do outdoor storage, and they show it on their site plans. They don't generally put it in the parking for their employees or people who are visiting the site. It's generally a designated storage area. Our really, our real concern is them doing parking lots and just throwing, throwing these in the parking lot. Sometimes gas stations do it, sometimes grocery stores do it. So those, most of those planes are reviewed administratively because they're small in scale.
Okay.
I did also want to just comment. Section five of our book was architectural design. And of course, it was one of the most fun parts to work on, but Mr. Heinmann was a big part of that and part of the committee, and he was there every day and that we had meetings, and very big part of our whole group. And I guess Mr. Swanson didn't find anything in the architectural section for us to discuss.
Typo.
But I wanted to see.
But previous.
Yeah. I just wanted to say, Mr. Heinmann, you know, you were a big part of it. Was there anything you wanted to say or add to our meeting today? After all that time and work and effort that you put into it?
I'll never pass up a chance to get to a podium, but-
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you very much for your kind comments. I have nothing to add, and thank you, Joe, as well.
I think he was going to mention that he did add the requirement for an architect to design the building, buildings that are 5,000 square feet or older.
I tried to put in the specific.
He did. Which we talked about in the workshop.
Thank you for your efforts, Mr. Heinmann. Anything else?
One more comment I didn't hear addressed was the four-inch caliper tree and the arbitrary reference to large area for gravel.
And I can address that. I think, you know, that is a requirement in the gateway, so it is being done in there. So it is being accomplished here. I think it is, you know, as a designer, when we go and specify that type of, that type of size of tree, we're looking to make sure that it's available. So I think it's incumbent upon the designer to make sure the availability is out there for it. Relative to the large areas, you know, that's a good question on there. I mean, the purpose of that is, I think what they were seeing was a lot of big ends of parking islands that were big areas that were just being mulched with no landscape or anything in there. So that's the purpose of that, is to make sure that you don't get these large stone areas or mulch areas without any landscape in there. So it's difficult to define what is large on there, but I think, you know, I think the staff would use good judgment as they look at that.
So did I hear you say that you could use a smaller tree based upon availability?
No, no, I think we just make sure that the availability of the specified tree is there with the nurseries to make sure that, you know, when we're specifying that on the plan, to make sure that's an available species that's out there. I think over the last couple of years, I think, Brad, there has been an experience of some shortage in that due to the drought and all that. We did talk to Brad about that, but that has eased up, and they're becoming much more available. I think that was just a little bit of glitch of about three or four years where we were having some trouble getting that size material.
And that's 10% of the trees.
Yeah, it's a very small amount, yeah.
So it's not an overwhelming majority.
Okay. Mr. Russell?
Yeah, I know we discussed living document as it relates to small changes, but is there a space for a cycle on this document, since it's such an important document? Are we going to review it every five years where we do a major review of the document?
We do not have anything set up that would create a review of the entire document in a five-year span or two-year, but typically what we find, it's like our zoning ordinance, and I'm not sure, do you remember the current zoning ordinance was adopted?
Yeah, 1984 or '05.
'84 or '05.
Four, '84.
The way I look at that is it gets reviewed every year, every month, actually, and is brought to you and criticized every day, actually. So what we usually find out is things typically, we will work out the details and work out what's not effective, what is, in some, in the first few years of the document. And then from there now, the 2035 plan that was adopted, now that's one that Margaret Ann will be working on as far as to the land use map, as far as the update on it. And then to me, we will be bringing reports back to the Planning Commission, City Council, on how that's progressing, because that's a 20-year build plan for us. And to me, that document, we would report back on that. This would be more in line with our zoning ordinance, if you will, and I think it will be changed just by going through and what works, what doesn't work, what makes sense and what doesn't. Just like we've made several changes to the BZA, you know, things that kept going back to the BZA, it really had no reason to go back. Fireworks tents, they used to be inundated with 30, 40 of them every year, and so we cleaned that up to where if they've been there the previous year, and they're doing the same thing, they don't have to reapply and go back. Staff can just sign off on it. So we're trying to go through and systematically make things less cumbersome and more user-friendly, and I think you'll see the same with this document.
And we do have some language in there. I mean, it was important to, as I stated, about putting an objective, which is one of these elements here of what we were trying to accomplish in there. We do have some language in the document, that if there's some other technology that evolves, or there's another way of achieving the objective, you know, the staff would consider that as part of the solution to the project. So there is still a little bit of flexibility built into the document to account for changing technology and changing ways of addressing some of the things in the document.
Randy, under roof design, fuel canopy roofs, we've received a little pushback occasionally, and not too many, but occasionally we'll have some pushback from builders of various convenience stores where we are asking for a raised roof on the fuel canopy. And we touched on it briefly on page 52, and there's a photo of a nice one there on page 52. There's also a nice one on page 29 that looks good, and I think they exhibit exactly what the Planning Commission was trying to desire, you know, in the appearance of these fuel canopies. But I was out on Franklin Road the other day, and I looked over, and the Tiger Market out there that's on the right looked really good. I mean, it looked very similar to what you see on 52 there, but the one across the street, and I can't even remember if it's on the go or what it was over there, barely, you could even barely see there was any kind of raised, it was there. At first take, it didn't seem like there was any type of architectural element there at all, but when you looked at it closely, you could see that it was a vain attempt to comply with our standards. Didn't look anything like what you see on 52, page 52 or page 29. Should we at some point look at this a little closer and put a little bit more descriptions or specifications of what we're trying to achieve on this?
I'll let Michael address that.
Randy's solution would be to add trees around it, but-
Then you couldn't see it. That'd be good.
We had some discussion on that, and there were differing opinions of those on the committee. I'm a firm believer in creating architectural treatment, but the committee, the general direction was that we do maintain some sort of a pitched roof there. Pitched roof, when it's drawn in a straight elevation, can be deceptive. If you look at a drawing and it shows this elevated roof, but when you're down on the ground actually looking at the built building, sometimes you don't see that roof, because you're looking at it pretty much at the same angle as the roof. You see it further away. So I think the solution there would at least be that graphically, the, all the correct information is provided to the staff so that they can review what's going to be built. I don't know that, I don't know that we need to add more language as far as added embellishments or anything, but I think we just need to make sure that the staff has adequate information so they know what they're looking at.
Okay. I was just thinking that, like Mr. Swanson was saying, that if you have a developer that's trying to comply with the guidelines, you've got to, they've got to have a clear understanding of exactly what the guidelines are. So I just wanted to bring that up for future reference in case, you know, we do need to make some modifications on it.
And we can make modifications with some direction as well.
Any other comments? Gentlemen, thank you for all your work. Great job.
I'd just say, I know Mr. Swanson's holding out down there, so I do want to say, though, how much I enjoyed working with both Reagan Smith, Mr. Caldwell, and Mr. Heinmann on this, and all the staff. Absolutely excellent.
And thank you for your time.
And I hope that everyone thinks that we ended up with a good product, but Mr. Smith?
If there's no other comments or questions, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, I don't remember hearing you close the public hearing.
I did. I hammered the thing so hard Kathy jumped.
As always. I always do that. Well, I would love to make a motion. We recommend that we would adopt this Murfreesboro Design Guidelines as presented today.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Any further business, Mr. Whitaker or Ms. Green?
Other than fill out those census cards.
That's right. Well, this concludes our fourth public, our fourth Planning Commission meeting of the month of November, thankfully, so move on to December. We stand adjourned.